Okay, I think the mayor's gonna speak to that in his mayor's message. We'll take that up in the regular meeting.
Okay. Item two is a hearing on proposed ordinance where it's only three sixty-seven Moreland Road from an R sixty-five M to a B two district.
Okay, that's the item that was before the council a couple of years ago and is back. The only question I had about that, Ms. Blaylock, you guys help me. I know I came down to the planning commission and that vote and I know the nine-member board, but the majority is five. So with five people being present, that make the majority to pass something three.
Their regulations are different. They have their own enabling legislation which requires that they have to have five votes.
Okay, so they're different from our regular?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So how did they adopt that? Is that something that they adopted as a planning commission or is that something that the council needs to adjust? I think in some cases, you know, that can be at a disadvantage for some things that we want when you're not gonna have nine members and you got to have five people to vote.
I think the enabling legislation was done by the state legislature. That's my understanding.
Wasn't a planning commission years ago?
So Stacy, you gonna chime in on that? Help me out. Cause I watched that vote. Someone abstained on that vote and there was five people here and they just abstained on the vote.
So what is your question about?
My question is, it takes five members to have a quorum to start the meeting. So the majority is five. So it should, my understanding would take three for a majority to pass a what we call an ordinance or resolution or whatever they need from the planning commission. And they said it was a four-one vote and but it was no action taken.
The legislation requires.
This is seven.
I can look it up if you'll come back to it and I'll find out something.
Okay, thank you.
Item three, resolution of approval and application for business license doing business as DeMarco Stoner Cafe.
All right, Ms. Veer?
Mr. President, we'll carry, talk about that in the regular meeting.
You say you're gonna carry it over?
No, no, no. We're gonna talk about and discuss it in the business meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, resolution of approval and application for an alternative transportation service doing business as disability as an ability towards success. Mom's on the move.
Okay, we carried that over two weeks ago because the owners was not here, so I'll see if they show up today at the regular meeting.
Item five, ordinance amending ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-two forty-four pay raises.
Mr. Pruitt?
That's just, that's just Mr. Calhoun, what we talked about last council meeting.
Okay.
It's just including eighteen other employees.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Pruitt, I mean, Mr. Smith.
Did we get any, any numbers? Cause I know we talked about getting some numbers. I just wanted to see that we getting any numbers on number five, if you don't mind, Mr. President.
Yeah, we have, we have some numbers on it. Ms. Beville?
Hey, your question, sir?
Just wanted to see that we get it. I know we was talking about, I know you're a number person, Ms. Betty, and I just wanted to see that we get any numbers on. I know Mr. Protem is saying eighteen. I just wanted to get a specific number on.
On the number of offices with that rank?
Yes, yes, and what would it, and the cost of?
I didn't know I was asked to do that in the last meeting. I would have to do that. I have not done that.
Okay, that's why I was just want, I just wanted to know, do we know where we are before I consider moving forward?
Mr. Mitchell, it's thirteen, it's thirteen captains and five majors.
Okay, I mean, I'm not doubting what he's saying. We just have not calculated those numbers because we were working on the information that we were given early to get it into munis, to be able to get the budgets out to the departments, which it took us two and a half weeks to do that. And so that's where we are right now.
Yes, ma'am.
I have no problem getting that total cost to you for those, what was it, eighteen positions you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, it will be something that hopefully next week maybe.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jim Wright?
Ms. Betty?
Yes.
This says all employees. That means that you got five percent pay for all of our city employees, period.
Okay.
That payroll will be a hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and thirty million dollars. Five percent means it's gonna cost us six and a half million dollars to do this. Is that what we, is that the intention?
Uh, the intention is to pay for a COLA for all employees other than the public safety sworn officers.
So we can cover six and a half million dollars?
We, we looked at the numbers and I presented that, what, a month and a half, two months ago in committee?
I always thought this was about the police department, but this is about the entire, all employees, right?
It's about all employees, including, I mean, anyone that's a city employee. The five percent COLA is for everyone except those sworn officers in public, in the police department who would be getting a fifteen percent pay increase or the five percent. There's this calling and sentence.
And let me remind this council, we've voted on this already. We've already voted on it. All I'm doing is asking if we can amend it for eighteen employees. That's it. We're not reinventing the wheel. It's just eighteen employees.
I think we voted on it, like you said, Mr. Pruitt, and I understand what you're trying to do, but at some point, this is just CC's opinion that we have to cut it off on based on what we agreed on, the fifteen, five, and five. And you know, I look at last year, we gave fourteen percent increase to all MPD, all police officers across the board, public safety. We're looking at, I think, when this council started discussing this two months ago, three months ago, we was talking about boots on the ground. How can we reward to retain those individuals that were serving in the Montgomery Police Department that was out on the street? We came up with the numbers with the finance department. As a council, we voted on it two, three, two, three weeks ago at our last meeting, fifteen, five, and five. And I think we got some people that's complaining about what the five percent means and what the pay raise would be. And I think we can make those adjustments as we go. If a lieutenant is gonna make board and a captain and a promotion, but to go across the board to increase and understand the intent. But to move that margin based on what we looked at from a financing standpoint and we put it in the budget to try to go ahead and move that forward. I think, you know, I understand what you're doing, but I guess the council can vote it up or down based on what the will of the council is at this point.
And also let me remind you that merit raises are included in this budget.
Hey, to, to this council, to this council, real quick, there are, if my numbers are correct, seven to eight captains that can retire in the next seven to eight months. That we need to keep if we can keep. You know, and, and again, to this council, we didn't create this problem. The last chief of police did when he promised him twenty-five percent. So yeah, and so we'll just, CC, we'll just vote our conscience and vote, vote what you wanna vote.
Well, let me speak to that a little bit. So, you know, I've talked to some captains too. Not every captain is, is in this for pay increase, okay? So that's number one. So it's not all the captains that are looking for this. Some of them say, I didn't sign up for the pay and what you all have done is more than what we've seen. So we need to understand that there's always gonna be some who don't appreciate. There, there are some folks in, in public safety who aren't getting this increase. Now, I want, we have other departments in public safety that aren't getting this increase. We have other areas in the city that aren't getting near this increase. So you're always gonna have some group, maybe one, two, ten, that feel left out. Everyone is appreciated and I think the finance team has done a great part, has done a great job in making sure that merit increases are included and in making sure that there's cost of living adjustments. To my understanding, in particular, talking to the interim chief who's coming in in a couple of weeks, that hasn't been the case. And there've been many, many, many more years where they saw no increases. So now, you know, that, you know, sometimes things can kinda get too good. And so I wanna make sure that we aren't speaking on behalf of all the captains because not all of the captains are making an issue with this. They recognize they got a fourteen percent pay increase in the last two years and that we're talking about coming back at their level for five percent increase on top of the merit increase. Sorry?
Fourteen point five.
Four, okay, I was corrected. Fourteen point five, not fourteen. Thank you. That decimal is important. So we just need to make sure that we aren't getting too far in the weeds here because now if we get here, then we can have this conversation across all the departments. That can be parks and recreation. We can have that conversation around sanitation, street maintenance, and we can have it everywhere. So the initial discussion was around getting more entry-level officers into our academy and getting more that are in that middle tier potential lateral moves. That's where that came from. But twenty-five percent pay increase was never agreed, was never agreed to. So whatever a former chief may have done, a former chief may have done. But he's not the current chief and he's not gonna be the future chief. And some of those captains wanted him out. So let's be clear, let's tell the whole story on that.
Somebody gave him the authority to go to the city county personnel board to approve a twenty-five percent raise.
You're assuming someone gave him that authority.
He went by himself?
I said, you're assuming that. But he's, he's not, he's not here. So whatever happened in the past is what happened in the past. My, my only issue is that what the finance committee came, what the finance director, the finance division came up with was what was voted on. And I think that that's very, very fair. I think it's very appreciative of the work that everybody in the police department is doing. I think it's very appreciative of what those that are in the city Montgomery's doing. But again, I, I don't want us to say that we got some cap, not every captain is saying, if you don't give me this raise, I'm gonna leave. Let me be clear to the council.
No, and I haven't spoken to everyone of them.
Okay, but you, you said seven to eight could leave.
No, I said, yeah, that.
Okay, but I'm, but I'm just saying that there are, there are captains who recognize what this council has done and what the city has done over the last several years in terms of compensation. Some of those very same captains are concerned about those coming in and getting new recruits and getting new police officers. And that is, and still remains their priority, which is why the whole conversation came up about where we, how could we provide an increase to be more competitively, to be more competitive in the marketplace, which the finance department has done and which the council approved. So I just wanna make sure that we aren't taking the voices of, of a few and making that, that's, that's the voice of a whole. Because I've heard different and I've gotten different from some of the same levels that you're talking to. So let's just make sure we aren't just saying broadly, seven are gonna walk off the job, cause I, I think, I think that's a bad.
I'm not talking about walking off the job.
But you said they could retire, so.
They could retire.
They can retire, they can retire, you know, whether they get it or not. I mean, I understand that, but I don't, I don't want us to equate them retiring with whether or not we give the.
I'm saying they could retire. We wanna attract them to stay. That's it. Listen, y'all vote your conscience. It's not that big a deal. Just vote your conscience.
Just, just, just a matter of clarity and understanding where the finance department was presenting this, where the council was in voting for it and where what I did authorize and support for those raises in terms of what we can do financially. I just don't want people thinking that there are folks out there saying, hey, if you don't do this, then we're gonna do that. That's not the case. Okay?
Okay. And I think Mr. Jim Wright's point, the number five says ordinance amending ordinance number nineteen twenty-two forty-four. And that ordinance voted for fifteen, five, and five. So I think that's what Mr. Jim Wright is talking about. It's a city raise across the board. And that's where it comes up to the six point five million dollar number. Cause it does not say captains or majors or whatever we was talking about.
Everyone outside of MPD sworn officers would get the COLA.
Yeah, we, I got that, but I'm saying what this ordinance says. It's the total package.
Right. So you're fifteen, five, and five.
Okay, we vote our conscience on that. We spend enough time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, ordinance amending authorizing payments to the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department for patrolling and law enforcement until MPD reaches four hundred.
Mr. Pruitt?
Mr. Calhoun, this is, there's been a lot of confusion about who's paying what and I think the cities, I, I hope the cities' point is to keep them for as long as we can until we get to a good number of officers. I think the sheriff has done a really good job in doing some of the things he's doing. And that's just the forty thousand covers the overtime for the county sheriff's department.
Okay, Mr. Mitch?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitch?
And so, and that's what I was talking about when we did look at that resolution. That resolution didn't have any detail where we asked for the sheriff department to leave. And that's why I held that, that resolution up, not because I didn't wanna see it in place, because it didn't have any details. Because anytime you ask somebody to do something, there's a cost associated with it. And that's why I wish that we would have addressed it then instead of, instead of now. But I, only thing I, I don't like about the, the ordinance, Protem, that it says four hundred. And how long would it, if it take us two or three years to get four hundred? You're talking about forty times, that's maybe four hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year that we will be giving to the, to the sheriff department until we reach that four hundred number. And that's, that's, that's a lot.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Has anyone talked to the sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What, has the sheriff indicated that he needs forty thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. He says that's what.
Has he indicated that he needs the forty thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. I think Rhonda Walker was actually covering it.
Okay, the sheriff has not indicated to me, and I think I was the first one to have a conversation with him back in February about this. So I, I have not heard that from the sheriff, but now I'll take you at your word if you say you've talked to him and he indicated. All right, now the second thing is, and I think Chief Hall can speak to this, which is that part of this is covered in, in the federal grant that we get regarding overtime. So now why are we, why would we be paying the county if the, if the overtime is covered by the federal grant that we currently have?
That's probably a Derek Cunningham question.
Well, but we, we at the city, Cunningham don't work for the, for the city.
Then why are they pulling money out of their budget, mayor, to cover it?
They didn't do it today.
Huh?
They voted it down, one to three. So they did not pull it out of the budget.
They had to pay for it.
No, no, no. I'm talking about on the vote where they was trying to pull the money out to give to the sheriff department for this overtime.
The forty thousand? Well, why, why would they, why'd they have to vote it down if it was covered under the?
They voted it down because they didn't need to pull it out.
I'm saying, but if the mayor's saying that it's covered under federal, whatever it is, then why is the county voting to pull it out? That's, that's sort of answered its own question, I guess.
That, that, that's a, that's a county question. Again, when Chief Hall gets here, he, he explained it to me earlier last week. So we can ask him to kinda clarify what that federal overtime is, but let, let me, let me say this. In my conversation at the time, the sheriff wanted to help out and I believe still continue, intends to help out and never mentioned any level of what was needed from the city in my conversations with him. Now, again, I, I think that the overtime is covered under the federal grant. We can get that clarified. But for us, I think we wanna make sure we do that before we have any discussion about paying the county forty, forty thousand dollars or anything for their assistance. He's been very, very willing to cooperate since we first had this conversation several months ago.
Um, Mr. President.
Ms. Johnson?
Protem, I will ask if you allowed him to have a conversation. Mr. Mayor, I did speak to the sheriff about patrolling North Montgomery after the incident. And he did mention to me about forty thousand for overtime to do that space. And I told him that I will talk to the counselor for, for I bet you Larry, kinda like that drawdown and drill I did when I first got in office. And he did mention something about overtime and that pay. But I, I think that Protem, you allow them the opportunity to have that conversation.
We can have, we can have the conversation, but I would hope and I would pray that Commissioner Singleton and Sheriff Cunningham would not fabricate a story to us to pick up an extra forty grand in their budget.
No, I don't think that.
I'm not saying they fabricate. It may be a miscommunication in terms of what's covered under the, the grant and what's not, or maybe how to apply for that. So it may be that, that we, they don't have a grants office. We do. We got a great one. So maybe it is they don't know quite how to get that covered. But as we all know, we're strapped here at the city and every dollar counts. So I wanna make sure that to the degree we can have that covered by the federal overtime grant, that we do that. If it's something different, then let's figure that out and let's see if there's another way to get it covered before we take it out of our coffers for that. Because again, the initial conversation, and I think it's been consistent, he has been willing to assist, help, and all those things. And it, it wasn't, again, a price tag attached. If that's changed because of some circumstances have changed over at the county, more than willing to engage and learn a little bit more and then see what we can do.
Mr. Protem, I think we, I mean, it's a new business item. We can carry this over and just guarantee that we have this conversation, the lack of kinda communication, the confusion that's created around. I've heard the forty thousand dollar number as well. We all wanna do it. We're all committed to do it. We're appreciative of the work that they're doing inside city limits. We just gotta make sure we're paying for it out of the. We just got to make sure we're paying for it out of the right bucket. Okay?
Can I say one thing, just very quickly? Just a little side note, we would have to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the Sheriff's Department.
Agreed, thank you.
And the Police Department has that paperwork just as we enter into agreements with other agencies where it's.
Are we in an agreement with them now? Or is it just because we'd have to pay them?
Uh, not that I know of, I have not reviewed one, and it would have to come across my, my desk for the mayor's signature. So, so there is not one, but under state law, it has to be a mutual aid agreement where it's spelled out what their authority is, who they're responding to, who they're answering to, what policies they're working under.
Hey, and just FYI, Commissioner Singleton just texted, and he said, "The county commission is paying the overtime for the sheriff, we do not have a federal grant for overtime." After, this is after, uh, Commissioner Walker's money has gone this month.
I'm, I'm glad the chairman is watching, uh, chairman, thank you for, for tuning in. Let, let's have a conversation about, um, utilizing these, this federal overtime, uh, and, and maybe bringing in some other partners even at the state level to assist us. I think there, there are a couple of different options we can go before we ask the city, uh, to do that, and I think we've got some people who'd be willing to help us.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, mayor, I got a, I got a question, makes you don't want to beat this to death. So we already doing some overtime, are we using up our federal money on overtime now?
Yes, and I, I'll get Chief Hall to speak to that when he gets here.
Okay. All right. Any more questions on item number six? Item seven?
Ordinance to establish duties regarding supervision of minors within the city to provide penalties for failure to supervise minors and other purposes.
Mr. Pruitt, you three for three?
Mr. Calhoun, this is the one that I talked about with you and the mayor upstairs one day, we found it. Um, what I'd like to do is put this into a committee and have legal and, uh, some of the judges maybe come take a look at this thing. But what it is, is just holding the parents accountable for the actions of the children.
Okay, and I think when, when you talk about that, I agree with you to put it in committee. So we can assign that at the regular meeting, you chair the public safety, it's about public safety, and also I want to take a look at that, uh, ordinance that I sent out, the ordinance on the curfew.
Okay.
That we sent out, and we just kind of tie all those in together.
All right.
All right, item eight?
Ordinance amending ordinance 51, Dash 2023, to change times of the work session in council meetings for August the 6th and December the 3rd to 2:00 PM and 3:00 PM respectively.
All right, Ms. Beer?
Um, yes, um, both of these dates, um, the first one coincides with our National Night Out, which is done yearly, and it would provide us all time to, um, go by and see our neighborhood associations, um, several in one night. The other one is from the calendar that the city puts out for the turning on the, um, riverfront Christmas tree and the Christmas lights and that kind of thing. It would just make sure that we're there, and so the citizens that are there do not have to wait on all of us like they did last year, and, um, so we can just get started with that event on time.
All right. Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Beer.
Item nine, resolution repealing the legislation which created Montgomery City-County Personnel Board and expressing council's intent to adopt an ordinance creating a city personnel board in accordance with Act 2024-Dash-337.
All right, council, this is the, uh, the legislation that was adopted by the state legislature to create the, uh, city, uh, council, uh, what we call our human resource offices, and so we had to do an ordinance to go ahead and to establish that. The county does not have to do one, so it has to come from the city of Montgomery, so that's why I put that on the agenda. Any questions?
Do we know? Yeah, hold on one second, sorry. I need to get to the other page. No, I don't know where my light. So in, inside this though, I, I think one of the things that I was kind of wondering is exactly who this is going to affect and what the processes are going to be. I've had a couple of people reach out privately that said they were concerned because there was a lack of detail about how this implementation was actually, implementation was actually going to happen and how this was going to be handled, so, and I, and I, there's not much in the, uh, in this sheet, so is there a way for us to get a little bit more information? I'm not saying, um, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this before we vote on this.
Mr. President, councilman, it's, um, in your email, uh, Attorney Bellinger sent us some information and the actual procedures and the, um, actual act.
Go ahead, Mr. Reed, you want to explain that?
Hello? Can you hear me?
No.
I need the mic. There we go. Um, I think the councilman's question is more on the city side, how are we going to execute HR functions once, uh, the City-County Personnel Board, uh, is, is no longer a part of our process? Uh, today was the closeout day, uh, delivery day for RFP, RFQ, for a consultant firm to come in and stand up our HR department to ensure that we're ready on, uh, January 1, when it would take, uh, take, take, uh, part that we start HR, uh, services for the city of Montgomery. I'll tell you, and as a HR professional and a CHRO of 85,000 people, our city-county personnel does not provide full-service HR, uh, uh, processes, procedures, uh, for our community, uh, within the city and our employees, therefore, that's why it was imperative that we made that change. Us, instead of just doing, uh, the simple, uh, listing of jobs, uh, certifying those jobs and then hiring people, we need things like, uh, lifecycle management, uh, things along the lines of, uh, professional development, training, those things are not done centralized by HR, uh, by.
Yeah, and so will the, the third-party group, they're just doing the consultation part, or are they going to be doing the implementation and operation of HR?
So they will be doing the consultation and the implementation as we build out our HR department and hire full-time positions, uh, in our HR department, so they'll be standing in the gap until we stand up a full, uh, full HR, uh, department with HR professionals.
And when are we, when is the RFQ closing?
Uh, the RFQ closed today, uh, so those, uh, we have right now four, uh, solicitations, and we'll be going through that and, uh, going through those, myself and the CAO, uh, and Ms. Beaville will be going through those and looking at those.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Item 10?
Resolution amending procedures for the issuance of all liquor, beer, and wine license on premise and on premise. Do you want me to explain?
That's the one that we're talking about when it comes to something that get caught in the cracks that it don't.
City event.
City events and those type things that we're using.
Right, as long as it's a city event on city property, then there are three criteria that I would check against, check with councilperson, make no, make sure there's no public objection, and that, um, it meets the 250 feet from a residential area. I could sign off on it without it having to come to council.
Number four to council.
We're having issues with, with, uh, meeting the time requirements on these event centers for the city.
Okay. Any questions on that? And I think we talked about that at our last meeting, and Ms. Blaylock sent out an email to each council member based on what we're doing, so we're allowing her to go ahead and prove things that the city is sponsoring on city property, uh, that it don't have to come between the council because we only meet first and third Tuesdays, and so we're authorized her to go ahead and sign up.
And we, I would make the count, when I receive it, I will make the council aware of it, and you can let me know if you have any objections whatsoever. If you have an objection, don't need to let up the council.
Okay, thank you. Item 11?
Resolution approving and authorizing Mayor Reed to make an application to HUD for fiscal year 2024, receipt DPG, HOME program funds into emergency solution grant funds.
All right, any questions on item number 11? Okay, thank you, item 12?
Application for special event retail liquor license by Cultural Affairs doing business as HBCU Afterglow Concert Series, 355 Acusa Street. And this is an example of that one, because we didn't have enough talent to, one, advertise it non-post the sign.
Okay. When is this event? Anyone want to share? Uh, Mr. Reed? You might want, on item number 12, I'm trying to figure out, the HBCU Afterglow Concert Series, when, when we kicking that off?
Um, that is usually, uh, in.
When the kickoff class?
The Red Tails Classic.
Okay, the Red Tails Classic.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Ready for 13?
Afterglow's either August 29th or between August 31st.
Between August 29th and August 31st.
All right.
Time to be announced.
All right, got it.
On the calendar.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Item 13, application for a conference center doing business as ABJC Conference Center, 3836 Harrison Road.
All right, we will have a public hearing on those items, and I think, uh, 12 and item 13 and 14?
They're not hearings, Mr..
Okay, yeah, those old, those approvals. Andrew, I know you probably talked, Mr. Samansky, on 13 and 14, if you look at the address, they're next door, so we're having that discussion.
Yep.
Okay.
Can I, I, Mr. Calhoun?
Mr. Pruitt?
What's the difference between a conference center and a.
That's exactly what I was going to ask.
Whatever it is.
There's no difference.
So you're either pregnant or you're not?
There is a distance requirement in event centers. One of these made application for an event center, they did not qualify because of the distance of within four miles of another event center, so they changed to a conference center.
Yeah, I was going to bring this up in the regular meeting, that I, I, we need to figure this out because this is a clumsy way for us to have a workaround for event centers, so, uh, we're not, I mean, I'm, I'm not suspending the rules on this one tonight, I'm going to have to talk to, and we talked a little bit about this during the committee meeting, but.
Right.
This, we're not, this isn't happening tonight.
Okay.
Item 15, application for towing company doing business as LMS Towing and Rose Hat Assistance with no physical location.
Mr. Mitch?
Uh, we were talking about, I hadn't had opportunity to speak to them, so we'll talk about it in the regular session.
Mr. President?
I had a question on that.
Okay.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Hold on one more time, Mr. Genright.
The, uh, there's no physical location, but yet it's assigned to District 6. Now, how did it get there without?
I did it according to the residence of the person, the resident.
His dresser?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that would be a location, wouldn't it?
That would be a location, if you ask me if they're working from their home, I think you asked that question earlier.
It wasn't on the application, they just, the application.
Okay.
Didn't have a business location, just the residential area.
Working at his house.
Mr. President?
Yes.
This has come up several different times as well, I know it came up at my district, and I think March 8th, Gaswell Johnson as well, so it might be something we need to visit.
All right?
Ready for number 16?
Yeah, item 16?
Resolution appointing A Diane Burke to the Board of Adjustment.
Um, Ms. Blaylock?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I say something, President? I'm going to hold up on this for a minute because, uh, someone reached out to me about Mrs. Shaw, and I need to talk to her one more time.
Okay. So this won't be carried over?
Yes, ma'am. Can you just carry it over for me?
Sure.
All right, hold on, Ms. Blaylock. Ms. Beer, you had a question for me while I was talking?
Hmm, good.
Hey, let me, let me listen for myself.
No, Mr. President, she was saying something, and I know you was, I don't think.
I was talking to Mr. Pruitt, okay.
Yeah, I don't think he heard you.
Okay, we'll go back. We'll rewind.
Rewind.
Rewind. I just know that, um, Councilman Johnson and myself both had this come up with towing companies previously, and so, um, just knowing that that's something that we've had up here before, so it might be something we need to revisit to make sure that we have some kind of location or whatever before it comes for council again.
Okay, and I agree, because no physical location means if we can't track them down, if the license is trying to reach out to them. So, okay, where, where we visit that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 17?
Resolution appointing Jeremy Browning to the Montgomery Queen City Commission.
All right.
Item 18, appeal of demolition of Governor's House Hotel about COVID, THJLLDR, and he's requested this be carried over. He is, he lives in Florida.
Okay.
And he has requested it be carried over to the next meeting, he can be here then.
I got a question about that. What, what's the purpose of the carryover? I mean, asking to be carried over when we, we received a ruling from the courts, right?
We've got a ruling from the, well, we don't have a dismissal from the court, we have a hearing at the end of the month on our motion to dismiss.
Okay.
Uh, the court said it was inclined to grant it, but it hasn't granted it. Regardless, what I've asked inspections to do is still continue with the process just as they would with any other citizen, and part of that is allowing, he has, he has a right to appeal to the council.
Okay.
Because he's been sent notice that, uh, notice that we're intending to condemn an unsafe structure.
Okay, so we're listening. We're listening, we move forward, okay, we carry it over.
Mr. President?
Mr., Mr. Pruitt?
Who is this person?
I have no idea.
Okay.
But we, we're listening, we're going to keep the process moving.
The attorneys who are handling the litigation on behalf of the plaintiffs have both said they will not be here, and they don't represent anybody who's coming for the council on the matter.
Okay, eh, but, but, Ms. Bellinger, you know where we stand as a council on the Governor's House Hotel and this community. Uh, we've been fighting this 20 years, two years in court, back and forth. I'm to the point, it's in District 5, you know, I don't, me personally, I don't know what the appeal is going to be about, it's not going to change my mind on what my vote is going to be on demolition, so they're just holding it up for two weeks, so I'm going to pray about this within the next 15, 20 minutes or whatever. All right.
I've already prayed, it's time, it's time to move.
It's time to move, okay.
I think it's come down.
See, see, maybe it will give you a three-month plan to fix it.
Yeah, right. All right, item number 19?
Pursuant to Section 1153B1, Cut of Alabama Authorization of Demolition of Unsafe Structures at the Listed Locations.
All right, we know item 19 and 20, we're good.
20's nuisances.
Just tear down, okay. Um, and, uh, any, council have anything before we go to our public communication work session? Ross?
Um, Mr. President?
Ms. Beer?
Um, yes, um, Mr. Mayor, I sent in, um, for Ella Martin to be placed on the Historical Commission, um, I think maybe it's gotten lost somewhere along the way, I sent it in in January, could you? I know Ms. Blaylock has sent it, I talked to C.C. about it, could you check into that for me, please? Can I send you an email or send, um, for Ella?
What's the name?
Ella Martin, and I sent it in on January 18th. I just think it's an oversight, but I would love for her to be able to represent my district on, um, Historical Commission, please.
It's not a problem.
All right, thank you so much.
All right. All right.
Mr. President, can I say one thing?
Oh, yes.
First, I wanna thank the sanitation department for coming out and helping us do a little cleanup over on Canalite on the Southern Boulevard this, yesterday. We've really got a homeless problem and we do have a drug problem with our, and mental health. And I think we need to look into some of that a little bit more because I've had a chance to be interacting with a lot of our homeless lately, and it's something we've got to look at and work on to make sure that we're taking care of our citizens around here with the mental health homeless. And, and I wanna give Corporal Lucky, thank you so much for all you do. I don't know if he's a lieutenant or, but I really appreciate him for just stepping out and being there to help and assist because he did an awesome job. He's making sure that we made contact and was able to get some things done and talk to some people and get some information on what they need. So that's one thing I wanna bring back to the council of what homeless residents are saying they need and what they're looking for us at the city council to help them with on their drug programs and mental health. And just some, I just wanna just hear the word that we're, we're here to help. So I just wanted to put that out to you, if you don't mind, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Mr. President, I got, I want to second that on Corporal Lucky. He did a great job. I had a, wherever he is, did a great job, got sanitation out. We've got a problem at Screws Park and they came over and cleaned it up. Really good job, I appreciate the heck out of that. I got one question. I'm getting worn out that people cannot get through to nine-one-one. Does anybody else have that problem?
Yes.
Yes.
So, Mayor, what can we do? I mean, because they're, they're, they're just not getting through, nobody's picking up the phone.
So we, we've heard some of those scenarios and one of the things that we're trying to do is to, again, I mentioned public safety. I want, I want Councilman Pruitt to make sure he hears this. Because I mentioned public safety. PD is not the only place where we have a challenge in recruiting and retaining people. Now, nine-one-one is a, I mean, it's critical, right? It, it's critical for our first responders to know where they're going and understand the circumstance in which they're going to. We've had major issues there to the degree that we changed nine-one-one directors here in the last year, year and a half. We have not put them in the increase in part because of salary, but in terms of what we can afford. Now, maybe it's something we, we take a look at, but we're having trouble recruiting and retaining nine-one-one operators in particular on that third shift. It's challenging. So we have had some discussions with our chief operating officer, our CAO, as well as chief of staff in the Montgomery Fire Rescue about providing some short-term support there. Chief Jordan is actively looking into some ways that they can assist us with professional, responsive help in that area. And we also are looking to bolster our recruiting, our marketing budget for nine-one-one, and we may, I'm gonna emphasize the word may so nobody says, "I promise anything," Mr. Pruitt, come back and we may have to look at some numbers for what we're doing in that department. It's very, very hard to keep those. They go through a lot, they, they hear a lot of
Bunch of stress.
A lot of stress. Not, I, I've taken this as a small sample and, and I, you know, it takes a little time to get over what, what people deal with on that end of it. And we, we don't want to just throw somebody in there now because of the nature of where our places our first responders, but it's something that now options are, all options on the table because it has some of the short-term stops that we thought we had, short-term fixes did not work, obviously, or did not work well enough. So we have to do more. We've gotta look at how we can cover all the shifts when people call out sick, when people have childcare issues, when they just are taxed mentally. We have to have a better backup plan than what we have right now. We're too close to the margins, so if that person, something comes up in their family, if they have a last-minute emergency on their own, we don't have what I would like to have. But again, we, we know there's an issue there. We've been proactive about it and I wanna thank our leadership team for moving on this and Chief Jordan in our conversation that we had yesterday, if I'm not mistaken, today's Tuesday, yeah, Monday, about how Montgomery Fire Rescue could play a role in that immediately to address the
That sounds good, sounds good. And Mayor, you're exactly right. If nobody answers the phone, we don't need a fire department or police department.
Yeah.
So, you know, and that's why I wanna start working on this public safety tax that I've talked to you about, a property tax referendum that would be earmarked for public safety, for police, fire, and nine-one-one.
Yeah.
And you're right, if nobody answers, you're in trouble.
Yeah.
Yarn? Mr. President? Ms. Mitch?
I just wanted to let the council know I will be bringing that resolution out of committee according about the Montgomery Museum. We, we, we worked with, with both sides. Stacy, in good faith, worked with their council, with the museum association, so I'm, I'm bringing it out. I just want the council to be aware of me bringing it out of committee.
Bringing it out of committee with the recommendation?
Yes, recommendation that we adopt.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Beard?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to where we are on the Collison Boulevard property to make it into the city receiving that as a gift from the exchange club, the ones that are left. I was told that we were right there on the paperwork to get this done. I'm ready to move on it. We already, the city already takes occupancy of the ballpark. We take occupancy of the playground. We take occupancy, we already have those resolutions of the walking park, and they're wanting to gift that to us. And we've been working on that since January, and I've not had any kind of bring to the table where we are. I think
Yeah, I can bring you up to date on that, Ms. Beard.
Okay, I've got a whole folder right here that we can, and we can
The council has legal, working with the Whiting Group is working on that project. The last information I got, which was last week, they are doing a title search, working with the
I have the title right here.
Well, we need to get that, we still have to do a title search. We gotta do our due diligence. If you have an illegal point going about it, we gotta do that. So as we, we're talking, it's in the process, it's being worked on by the Whiting Group to get that property transferred on. I know it's something that's dear to your heart, but we're trying to do our due diligence. We signed the contract, we're staging them to move that on, so they're working that stuff to move.
Well, I just know Mr. Peake has contacted me and I, I just need to be able to answer and see what, what, how we're moving forward. Okay, I'll tell him that again.
I'll bring you up to date with emails on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all right. Someone, all right, in our public communication work session roster, we have Mr. Tate, let me, Mr. Tate, for, for, let me move to the citizens, then I'll come back with you, okay? Ms. Coraleen Moore with Boss Youth League?
Thank you.
How y'all doing? You all right? All right, good to see y'all.
Thank you.
All right, doing well, good to see you. All right, like that.
Thank you, how you doing?
All right, y'all doing all right?
Thank you so much.
All right, good to see you now.
Thank you.
How you doing?
How you doing?
Hey, how you doing?
How you doing?
You doing all right? Oh, I'm talking about, you didn't make me.
How you doing, man?
How you doing?
How you doing?
Thank you. Thank you, how you doing?
Thank you, love.
How you doing? Coraleen Moore? Go ahead.
Good evening, we know y'all are really busy and we don't wanna take too much of your time. I wanna thank the council, President, I wanna thank the city council, I also wanna thank the mayor for having us today. We really appreciate it and I wanna thank you for all your help in the past. We're best in student shooters, business of success in sports, Boss Youth League, and we're based in Montgomery. And our mission is developing students into healthy entrepreneurs and leaders through discipline, dedication, and development. Here you see me with my wife, some of the parents and some of the students here today that we want you to have a firsthand look on our progress and what we've accomplished with the city council's help. We've, over the weekend, we went and participated in a tournament in Atlanta, Georgia. We won first place with our group. And also we have some other things coming up and we really want your support on those things as well. We've served over four, four thousand youth since our inception in two thousand twelve. And with that being said, I'm gonna let Coraleen, Ms. Coraleen take it over.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Coraleen Moore, and I wanted to talk to you about the positive impact that we wanna highlight in the community. I think that you guys have done a, a great job in supporting us, but we need more support as far as like letting everyone know about one of the positive things that programs like ours are doing. So just more marketing, letting people know that programs like ours exist. We service close to forty kids every semester and we have three semesters throughout the year. And we, every other week, we're going out of town somewhere, whether it be in the state of Alabama or out of town in Georgia, sometimes in Tennessee, Louisiana. And we got this major trip coming up in Miami, Florida. As you know, I've spoken about it before, is with NBA champion Norris Cole, and he was a teammate with LeBron James in the Miami Heat. It's gonna be at Florida Memorial University, HBCU, D1, and it's schools from all over. And we're taking this trip, we need your financial support, we need you all to encourage us because, and let everyone know about what we're doing because if we get the championship, we gonna come back with a parade, we gonna make it really, really, really big. It's very important because we fell short just a little bit. So we're asking for every council member to contribute fifteen hundred dollars towards our cause to get us there. We'll greatly appreciate it. And it's important that these kids, not only they learn basketball, but they learn entrepreneurship as well. Last time we went, they went to the Lamborghini shop, saw a young entrepreneur under the age of thirty having his own Lamborghinis to rent out. So with that diversity that they see, they realize even though Montgomery's a nice place, they see diversity, they see different businesses, and they see that there's a whole world out there and they don't have to get into all the negativity
Okay.
that is pushed on, on social media.
Ms. Moore, that's your time, and I'm gonna give you my card and we can kinda share that information. I would like to meet with you guys to talk more in detail about how can we help you guys do what you need to do with Boss.
Okay, I greatly appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Leslie Sanders? Leslie, now here. All right, Mr. Tate?
Hello, council.
Hello, Ms.
It's always a pleasure to come before you. Today we are here to express some information that may be helpful. As you know, one of the functions that fall underneath the inspections department is property maintenance. And I think I've heard from just about every one of you relative to issues that you're concerned about, whether you've contacted me or Mr. Brandon Hodge here, we all know the concerns at this time of year. And so we thought it would be advantageous to kinda let you guys know and anybody who's listening, kinda the process we go through because sometimes what happens is people say things are not happening, but certain components of the process are in place. But Brandon is here with a PowerPoint and I want him to explain a little bit, very succinctly, how this process works and remind everybody one more time about how we go about addressing your concerns when you call us. So Brandon's gonna step up and we'll go from there.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And I know we're short on time, so I try to keep it short and sweet, kinda generalize some things. But to echo Mr. Tate, this is one of the busiest seasons for our department based on requests we're receiving from, from citizens, same as you all. So we just kinda wanted to take a few minutes and kinda highlight a few key points on the process and exactly how our department responds. Next slide, please. So what we enforce within the property maintenance division is the public nuisance section of the municipal ordinance. Most of that's gonna be found in chapter twelve, the environmental nuisance ordinance. And as it states, the intention is simply to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the general public and to address any and all public environmental nuisance issues that we can. And I say environmental nuisance because our department does respond to a, a lot of legislative complaints and requests from citizens, but our focus is gonna be on the environmental issues, overgrown grass, weeds, things of that nature, and not necessarily any other issues that may involve zoning or recreational vehicles, boats, two-tall fences, things of that nature. Next slide, please. Here's a few broad definitions. They're more defined in the ordinance, but a good rule of thumb is, is just overgrown grass and weeds, we're gonna note that as a violation when it exceeds twelve inches. Litter, trash, obviously it's gonna be uncontainerized, man-made waste, just some organic debris, tree limbs, fallen trees, things of that nature, and then junk and junk vehicles. I separate those because in the definition of junk, it does identify vehicles, anything in a junk, wrecked, dismantled condition can be defined as junk. And then anything that is a vehicle that cannot be safely operated on the city streets or is incapable of moving under its own power will be considered a violation. And when I say vehicles, I also like to highlight that we need a clear indication of a vehicle not being operable. I know a lot of times, a lot of citizens will call us and say a car hasn't moved in X number of months. For us, that's really not an issue unless there's an indication. If it's, like I said, missing parts, wrecked, dismantled, missing wheels, on jacks, that's what we're gonna use as an indication that there's an issue to address. Next slide, please. Our process is initiated with a request from a citizen through three-one-one. We import those requests on a daily basis. I think we average anywhere from forty to sixty requests a day. Those requests initiate our inspection process. Our inspections by our inspectors is gonna be conducted from plain view areas, so anywhere they're legally entitled to be under the plain view doctrine. We don't approach upon private property owners' rights if they have issues that are, you know, specific to a backyard. Like I said, our inspectors are gonna conduct their inspection from the, from a plain view area, an alleyway, sidewalk, street, anything of that nature. This initiates our process, but the biggest thing is, is we like to point out, we do commercial, residential, vacant, occupied lots, and all of those fall under the same blanket of ordinances. We don't, we do not separate whether it be commercial, residential, vacant, or occupied. It's all gonna be conducted in the same manner. Next slide, please. To initiate our process, to do process, a notification is sent, a notification is posted in a conspicuous space, only property, and then a notification is sent to the property owner and the resident of the structure, if there is one. That notice provides a description of all that entails, that is entailed with the process. The notice is essentially a warning. A lot of people don't understand that, but it's essentially advising that you have an issue that you need to address and we're gonna allow you ten days to take care of that issue before we proceed with any action on our end. Next slide, please. If the action is not carried out by that property owner, we cannot act before coming before y'all as a council and adopting a resolution. We do assess an administrative fee of a hundred and fifty dollars if the action is not taken within those ten days. But before we can carry out the actual abatement process, by ordinance, we do have to present a resolution to the council as a whole to be adopted. In that adoption, there is also the go-ahead for the abatement as well as the subsequent lien to be filed against the property. But again, we cannot take action until that resolution is adopted. Next slide, please. That abatement, the timeframe of the abatement, and this is kinda one of the highlights we wanted to make sure everybody receives. A lot of citizens do not understand that if we receive a request today, we cannot act on that immediately. We do respond as quickly as possible, but again, there's a minimum of a ten-day notification timeframe, we're gonna allow that property owner to act on their own accord. Beyond that, again, we cannot move forward until we receive council approval, which obviously is only gonna be twice a month, the first and the third Tuesday of every month. That's one of the key points we wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of, that we cannot simply see an issue and send a crew out to take care of it. Everything we're doing is gonna be on privately owned property. It's no city Montgomery maintained property, it's gonna be on private property. And by law, we have to afford them due process to take care of it on their own accord. Our timeframes, best-case scenario is fifteen days before we can abate the crew to address an issue. I say best-case scenario because the ten-day timeframe and the council date, if they fall in the perfect order, then the reinspection took place on the same date as the council hearing, we bid out our agents to our agents and on Friday make the award. If they were to abate it Friday when they got the award, that would be fifteen days. It's not a common occurrence. Most likely what you're gonna see is a thirty to forty-five day, even possibly sixty-day timeframe, depending on when the action, when the due process was initiated, when the request was received, and just where it falls in that calendar. But like I said, I think a lot of people don't see behind the scenes that we are in fact working as quickly as possible, but with it being private property, we do have to afford a certain due process to all owners. And unfortunately, sometimes it does take us a lot longer to address issues, to address issues than we would like. Next slide, please. Here are a couple of photos. Another thing that we'd like to point out is we're looking for an abundance of overgrown grass and an accumulation of litter, junk, and trash. We're not simply looking for a fence line that somebody ran out a weed eater string on or a couple of chip bags in the yard. For it to be considered a public nuisance that's affecting the city as a whole, like I said, we're gonna look for an abundance and an accumulation. And so these next couple of slides just show photos of violations that have been cited here in recent times. Obviously, this is gonna be overgrown grass and weeds, and again, it's, it's exceeding twelve inches. It's an issue when we see it initially, and obviously by the time we're following up, it's a much more severe issue as you can see in these photos. Here is gonna be trash, like I said, that's obviously something that sanitation's not gonna address, so it does fall on us, which a lot of people, we do work in conjunction with sanitation, but it's undermanned and it's, and as much as they're already doing, when we see something of this nature, we take it under our wing to, to address. Again, just abandoned vacant property that, that nobody's maintaining. Here's a good picture of what I would say is a clear indication that vehicle is inoperable and can't be driven safely. But a lot of times what we get is, is vehicles in a whole condition that just aren't moving. And so it's, it's like I said, we're looking for clear indicators. Again, at least a definition, wrecked, dismantled, junked, whatever you would say. And this is a little conclusion. I always like to point out that our first, first effort is gonna make, is trying to make communication, make contact with the resident, with the owner. We're looking to educate and encourage before we ever enforce, and a lot of people aren't privy to that, they think we should just go out and start enforcing, but what we try to do is educate and encourage because if we can get a property owner to take action on their own accord, it prevents it from becoming a, a reoccurring issue down the road. If we simply start our process and don't educate on what exactly we're doing, again, we're just gonna continue to process, or continue to, to see it, oh, time and time again. Uh, and just again, we're working as hard as we can to address as many issues as we can. Unfortunately, sometimes it does take a little bit longer, uh, because we cannot just immediately go in and take effect.
Just, before we go away, uh, item 20 on this agenda, you're gonna vote it, you're gonna approve it tonight, but what's behind that item is almost 400 properties. So to quantify all of this, this time of year, when we come down here and you approve this last item on the agenda, you're talking anywhere from 3 to 400 properties every two weeks. So that tells you the magnitude of what these guys are up to in the street. That concludes our presentation. If you have, don't have any questions, we'll look for your approval.
Can I jump in real, real, very quick?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
We want to do two things. We want to ask all of you to share this with, uh, your email list, your, uh, social media, uh, as well as certainly your, your in-person, uh, neighborhood meetings that you all do. One of the things we're asking former Councilman Dow to do, uh, neighborhood services to be more proactive and informing, um, all, a lot of new residents here, a lot of new home renters and homeowners in this city don't quite know, uh, you know, how government works, how the municipal government works, so we're trying to make, simplify it, uh, we're trying to make sure we communicate in a proactive way and we're, we're gonna be asking for, for some things in the budget that kind of will support that so that we can get this directly to the neighborhood, in particular neighborhoods and the districts that we have the most issues with in terms of call volume, uh, in terms of, uh, I don't want to say complaints, concerns, uh, that we have and then we're gonna make sure that we keep this up on the city website as well, so people understand exactly how this works, how the process works and really how they can help clean up, uh, their neighborhoods, but also how we can help them, uh, improve their neighborhoods and communities also.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tate. Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Thank you guys.
Thank you for all you do.
I got one question, Mr. Tate, if you don't mind. My question is, um, I like the slide, can you add in there, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Tate.
Because one thing they have a problem, and I know for dealing with this a lot, is our, our timeframe of getting the bids out and making sure we get the bids done. Um, can you kind of say something about that? We have to bid this out so we can, they'll understand that this is a bid process when the grass is overgrown in the process of how, you know, we have to send people out to assess?
That, that's right. So very simple, uh, public dollars like these, we want to be sure that we get the best price and in order to do that, we have to provide competition because at the end of the day, the cost that my department takes on will also be included in this person's property tax lien situation. So they're gonna have to pay this money back at some point and we want to be sure that we've done our due diligence to make sure that we've gotten them, uh, the cost in the proper fashion.
Thank you.
Mr. Tate, can you send this to all of us?
Certainly.
The slideshow? I, I think we would all welcome that. I'm almost finished, Councilman.
Yes, indeed. We'll be happy to do that.
Okay.
Brandon will send that out just as soon as we can.
And y'all do a fabulous job. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. You're very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Tate?
No, thank you, Mr. Tate.
Thank you.
Mr. Hodge.
All right, Mr. Moore, Ms. Care, reporter. Uh, before you guys come, Ms. Moore, Ms. Porter, we're gonna skip over the presentation. I think, uh, Mr. Mitch who asked that you guys come have a couple of questions and we'll allow the council to ask some questions and we'll move on for a second time.
Mr. President.
Ms. Mitch.
Um, the reason that I, I, I brought them in front of the council, um, everybody know that the county commissioner had a, a, county commissioners had a resolution, uh, reallocating some funds and I wanted to try to get in front of it if we did not get those funds that was allocated, that was supposed to be allocated to the city. So I just want to, I was looking at the safer community, uh, communities act and I just wanted to see if we do not get that 1.7 million dollars or if we only get half of it, we need that, um, to do the wraparound services and do the street intervention and put some people where we need to put them. I just want to see what could we put in place to supplement for any money that we may lose or what grant will we be able to apply for, for gun violence, youth violence here in the city of Montgomery.
Okay, so we have already applied for the, uh, community-based violence intervention and prevention grant program for $2 million and that particular grant won't be awarded until October. We are also exploring 12 other options for the Office of Violence Prevention. Those grants are not available, they're not, uh, the deadlines aren't passed yet, so we're still working on those. But we've submitted, um, that particular grant, COPS hiring grant, Second Chance Act for smart supervision, community policing micro grant and a school violence prevention program grant. And those total over $15 million. And so we're also working on over 25 more million dollars. Regardless if you get the money or not, it, uh, it is required that in order for us to make a change as far as violence prevention is concerned, we need at least $10 million a year. So regardless of which, we need to, um, find that funding, whether it's through, uh, the budget process or through grant funding.
And, and that's, and that's what I want to hear. I just want to make sure that we were being proactive on everything. I didn't want, um, that 1.7 million dollars to stop the work of the city, um, because we, we, we want to see violent crimes change or whatever it take, and we all know it take funding no matter what it is, putting boots on the ground, putting street interventions in those communities. I just want to make sure that we want to be impactful with what we're doing, so thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Hey, the presentation that you was gonna present, I know Mike has it on his stage. You guys would just send that out to each council, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Pruitt.
Uh, Mr. Calhoun, I've been informed that we need to go into executive session for litigation purposes.
For what?
Litigation purposes.
Turn.
It's A3.
It's what?
Eight, three.
We will not reconvene?
We not, I mean, um, well, we probably gonna take about 10:15. The council meeting will, uh, begin at 5:40.
At 5:40?
Yes, ma'am. 17:40 for you military people.